Good afternoon, everybody. We all bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, I come to you in prayer for our city, Lord God. And we ask, we ask that you watch over our mayor and our mayor pro team and all the council members that we have and the clerk and our first responders, Lord God, and our fire department and the police department, the things they had to do, the duty they had to do for this city to keep us safe and all the workers that we have that, that keep the city running, all the paperwork they have to go through and all that, Lord. It takes a lot to run this city. It's a blessing by itself that we're able to get all these workers to try to make the city work and run. The things that the city has done in the past years is unreal, it's unbelievable, and it all comes from you, Lord. And I want to thank you and I ask for wisdom for all these people that work here for the city, even the residents, that they all understand it takes a lot to do this, that we all are on the right track and that we move on forward to everything that we do. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, Councilman Lovett.
Here.
Councilman Schlack.
Present.
Councilman Valerius is asked to be excused. Councilman Sykes.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Yes.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lally. Any corrections, additions, subtractions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of September 28th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lovett, seconded by Councilman Sykes. Any corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I just want to point out that our state representative, Tulio Liberati, has joined us tonight. If you stand up, he's making a very rare appearance since they are usually in session on Tuesdays, so he doesn't get down here for our council meetings, but he's been to them so far and we look forward to perhaps a few more. But he's here to help us in any way that he can, and we're very happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, I am going to read a proclamation that I had the pleasure of actually handing to Ms. Amanda Chittister last Monday, where they held an event for her at Cabrini High School, which was quite impressive. She spent a lot of time there at the elementary school, with the children from elementary school, if anybody has taken a look at Cabrini's Facebook pages, and then was seated at the football field for the high schoolers. And I must say that Matt Valerius, his timing is not good. He would have loved to have spoken about her himself, since he had the opportunity to teach her for four years at Cabrini and work on your book with her, and had nothing but positive comments. And while I did not meet with her for any length of time, I would say that those of us who were there, Tony and Matthew and myself, speaking just for me, she is an exceptional young woman and a role model that we should all emulate. So this evening, I am going to read the proclamation, which I presented to her on Monday. Amanda Chittister, Olympian. Whereas Amanda Marie Chittister was born and raised in the city of Allen Park, Michigan, and whereas Amanda attended St. Francis Cabrini High School, where she was not only an honor roll student, but an outstanding athlete, being named the 2007 Gatorade Michigan Softball Player of the Year, twice selected to the EA Sports Softball All-America First Team, and establishing records and earning recognition while a member of Cabrini's two-time state championship team. And whereas while enrolled at the University of Michigan, she further distinguished herself, twice being named Big Ten Conference Softball Player of the Year, two-time NFCA All-American, Michigan's Big Ten Medal of Honor winner, and ranked second in school history in RBIs and second in grand slams. She was also team captain her senior year. And whereas in June 2012, Amanda was named to the USA Softball Women's National Team and hit a grand slam to lead Team USA to a victory over Brazil in the 2012 World Cup of Softball. And whereas in her professional career, she was named the National Pro Fast Pitch Player of the Year, National Pro Fast Pitch Offensive Player of the Year, and Home Run Award winner. And whereas Amanda Chittister became the first player in University of Michigan softball program history to claim an Olympic medal, earning silver on July 27, 2021. Therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, Mayor, do hereby congratulate Amanda Chittister, number 19, on her many accomplishments, and we thank her for proudly representing the United States of America. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this fourth day of October 2021. And one other thing I wanted to add, it was very impressive, Cabrini actually retired her number. So it was quite an honor to be there and we're very privileged to meet her. Now, we'll move on.
At this point, Tom, I'm kind of glad she's not here to have to follow after that, but there's quite a few accomplishments there for her. Just a couple of updates. We're still waiting on the bridge to open up at the Moran, old Goddard, Goddard intersection there. Going by there, myself went by there this morning, talked to Tom this afternoon. You noticed that they were pouring some concrete on the decking, so they are making some progress here. Probably still on track for sometime in mid-November for an opening. For the street improvements for hand four, JV Cement has poured all the concrete in front of the residential houses, and they just have the two intersections remaining. Those are the intersection at Lawrence and the intersection at Roger Avenue, and they'll be getting those and getting that project wrapped up and getting it ready for restoration. And when they do the restoration for that project, they'll also be doing the restoration for the water main project down in Shenandoah, so that'll commence here hopefully by the end of the month or first of, first couple of weeks of November and get that all the set down, be ready to go for spring. For the Street 16, Savone did finish Quant Avenue across the street, so that is now reopened to the public and much, much improved over the previous conditions that we had there. So that project went quant from Southfield Road to Dashar, all wrapped up and reopened to the public again. They are currently, Savone is currently working on the utility repair list. Those are the result of water main breaks or sewer issues in the past few weeks, few months, and they're getting all those wrapped up here for the holiday, or before the change of the season. And for sidewalks, some streets approaches. So if you've had anybody that has maybe reached out to you with a concern over a water main break or sidewalk in front of their house not being repaired, that is what Savone is working on right now for the, throughout the city. Al's Asphalt, they'll be in the, to start paving Park Street over by Millward Park, starting Thursday if the weather cooperates. And that also, recall, includes the parking lot at the Millward Park, Millward Rotary Park, so they'll be working on that probably immediately after the roadway is all done. They'll get that parking lot all wrapped up and back open to the public. And then, as we mentioned in the earlier session, the work session, talking to the finance director, words, the emergency loan that was approved here by the city council a few months ago and sent to the state of Michigan was, the city of Allen Park was approved for that rate reduction. That rate will, reduction will now save the city over the course of three to four years, thirteen thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Not a whole lot of money, but still enough to make it worthwhile and anytime you can save almost fourteen thousand dollars for a couple of resolutions. I think Joe had to look at it, a couple of signatures. Well worth it at that point in time. Everybody should have received the newest edition of the Allen Park Today magazine. We're kind of surprised that it took us this long to actually address the, probably the biggest icon of the city as a tourist attraction with the Uniroil tire, but we had other things we were talking about trying to highlight as well. So the tire was highlighted in this magazine, and if you do go down I-94, Michelin, good, Michelin Uniroil has paid to have the tire lit up in pink. Now, I believe in person, it looks a lot better in pink than it does in the photographs that we've been able to post on our page and have been shared to the police page and other pages. But we do thank Michelin Uniroil for doing that, and that is for the entire month of October for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I do believe tomorrow night, it'll be changing over for Metatastic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and that'll take in the three colors of, it's on your guys' car, thank you, of a green, a teal, a pink, and a bluish color. So we were giving Matt Baker a hard time a little while ago, but Matt is actually going to be working tonight to set up the light colors, so City Hall can also change to those colors tomorrow night in that same honor. And so we do appreciate, I give Matt a hard time. He's still not in the woods, I may call him up here after, I'll just tell you about something, but I don't know yet. And then we should have all received the information, I know it came in the, in an envelope, delivered to all of us, but the pumpkin patch again, as Mark Bailey mentioned last time around, number 33. I didn't see if Mark was here tonight, if he's going to come up or not, but a great event as well. So that is everything I have. Any questions or anything I can help answer?
I have a motion to accept and file administrative report.
Make the motion, Mayor.
Seconded by Mr. Lally.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Schlack. Any questions? Emma?
I just gave a quick look, but it seems like we might have some students here again, which is very nice to see. Hopefully, we can get down quickly and they can go home, but it is nice to see the students being able to come back in and partake in the events here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to...
Through the chair.
I'm sorry.
Can we make, all in favor?
All.
We didn't vote on it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Now, we come to the public comment section. Anyone can come up and comment. You have four minutes. All we want is to provide your name and the street on which you live. Please do not give us the full address.
Okay, Mark Bailey, somewhere on Park Avenue in Philamine. One again, second meeting in all. Thank you for letting the Elks have our special needs function. And now, we're getting closer, and we have one more meeting, so hopefully, I'll make this real quick, first of all. One more meeting to go. We've experimented with the pumpkins last night, and the weather was too nice, so we're working on those, and we will be going Sunday nights, getting more pumpkins. And I want to really thank everybody in this room, except especially the students who have come through for me in the past, helping out with our special needs program and outside with all the trick-or-treaters. We think we're going to be able to do it, we don't know what's happening still. I have a full slot of entertainment lined up for your enjoyment, starting at 1:00, a five-piece band till 4:00. And it's been heard that Elvis has been roaming around, he will be back for an hour's show from 4:00 till 5:00. And Keith Creepy Brown, who is much better than the ghoul or Sir Graves Gasly, if anybody knows that name, has been doing it for 10 years. And the homecoming floats, we would love to have them on Park Avenue to add to the decor. And please come down and enjoy the function, be an attendee, and welcome the special people that come to the Elks Lodge to have one of their favorite days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. If no one else is coming up, we'll close the public comments and move on to our resolutions. I don't know, the consent agenda. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, which consists of purchasing actions, claims, and accounts, and payroll, and finance actions. The September 2021 finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet, and cash flow.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Seconded by Pamela Sykes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolutions. Resolution for Mayor and Council to ratify and approve the city administrator's action regarding the emergency purchase of a flight pump from Kennedy Industries in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, and waive the city bid process, emergency in nature, with funding from Basin Capital Outlay Account 592-603-93000. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Seconded by...
Ms. Sykes.
Ms. Sykes. Questions or comments? Somebody want to come up and let everyone know what this is about?
I'll let Tom also talk too, but this will be the, for a pump. We were just looking at the timing, that is why the ratification request was there for this pump. We were asking for ratification. In order to order it ahead of time, that needed an action by myself and then a ratification by this board. I'll let Tom talk about the pump itself, though.
So this pump is at the Lowe's Pump Station behind Lowe's retail space. It affects the hill and all of Independent Marketplace. Fairland Green is the hill. There's two pumps in that station. One of the pumps, after we did a test on the pumping systems, came back very inefficient and needed some repairs. After we sent it out for checking on repairs, it was determined it was only about four thousand dollars difference to buy a new pump instead of have this one repaired and built. So we then took and figured this was a very important place, that we can't have one pump running when you have two, so we took the emergency action to purchase the pump and get it here quicker, so there's not a problem if something were to incur.
And I understand it's coming soon.
It should be here within about, less than two weeks. We were told today about a week, week and a half, the factory will have it sent out. So probably put in within two to two and a half weeks installed.
And just so everyone is aware, can you kind of briefly talk about maintenance or how we do maintenance here?
Well, with maintenance on the pumps, we have two individuals, staff for the city, that all they do is check all our lift stations, pump stations, and retention basin. They go every week to each station individually, and they test on the pumps, they test on the electronics, they write down the hours, they write down how long they've ran, and we have systems that tell us if they've ran so long to start getting the pumps rebuilt. Therefore, that's why I'm in front of you several times about getting rebuilds on pumps, because this is natural, something you have to do with man-made products. And they pretty much do all that. It's sealed, all the pumps we have are sealed, so there's no greasing the pumps, as people may think, there's no anything like that. And sometimes, we have to have engineers come in and do some called drawdown test, that is to let the station fill up, not to where it's going to hurt anyone's residential homes, but you fill it up and you turn them both on as, to mimic a storm. You do that about every six months, and that's how this was found out about, the situation.
Just to clarify, we have two pumps per station, and the second pump is like, is a backup. So for the pump, for the station to run, or that's not quite accurate?
It's kind of accurate, but a little bit. Not all stations have two pumps. No, no station has less than two pumps.
Okay.
Okay? In specifics to this station, there's two pumps. One typically runs on normal, average days. If something were to have a larger amount or quantity of sanitary, or possibly rain, then the second pump will help it out and get it out, but they alternate, so they keep their hours down, so you don't wear one pump down and have another one not doing it. But currently, one pump is handling it just fine.
Through the chair. So just for the residents that were in our work session, this is a 15-year pump?
This pump was put in in 2006, so yes, it is 15, but I wouldn't say they're considered a certain time limit. I mean, a pump, just like a car, can fail in five years for no reason.
I believe the last one we replaced over there was 2016, for, so 10 years.
So yeah, this will be the second new one in there since this station was built behind Independent Marketplace, and therefore, it'd probably be several years, we should have no problems, hopefully.
I'll jump in real quick if I can, I just want to kind of give Tom some kudos here, because I believe when he came on board, the, the maintenance program became a little bit more comprehensive, where there was the two guys dedicated going out to each of these pump stations and really taking ownership in each one of those facilities and making sure the maintenance is getting done on a regular basis. It was getting done prior to that, but now, it's really a more weekly basis, it's really more comprehensive than it was in the past. And I think that's why you are seeing the longevity a little bit different on those pumps from prior years.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question about the pumps itself. When we buy a pump, do we look at how good is the pump, or you go medium, lower, to the high, whatever pump you, a pump is a pump, right? I mean, you go for the best pump, or is the best pump?
So you go for the best pump that's in a certain situation. Certain stations take so much gallons per minute, gallons per second, some stations don't need as much. It depends on how much is on there, how many taps are on there. Our engineering firm goes through all that, that's what they're very well trained and very well schooled in, what's the best product they, we all, including myself, reach out to other communities that may have had problems with certain type or better doing with certain type. A good situation would be, Allen Park doesn't seem to have like a lot of rag problem, a lot of, you know, heavy stuff in there. We have mostly mixed rainwater, sometimes sanitary, so we just need a normal submersible pumps most of the time. But I know like Waterford Township, they need something called a chopper pump. They get a lot of debris somehow in their system, so them pumps chop up things so they can get it out. We have not ran into that, we've looked into that, and we found them to not be something we need to purchase for extra dollars right now.
So there is a choice of pumps?
Yes, it is. There's, there's many types, many horsepowers, it's all math situation and figuring out what you need.
So the pumps we're getting are good pumps?
Yes, they're the best you can buy for the situations we use them for.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Or something else?
Yeah.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we come to other business, which is ordinances, and tonight, we have the first and second reading of proposed ordinance number 07-2021. May I have a motion for the reading?
Motion.
By Mr. Lovett.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good evening. Proposed ordinance 07-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 10, Building and Regulations, section 10-30, fences to repeal and re-adopt section 10-30G2C to authorize the building department to issue a permit for the installation of a six-foot fence beyond the side door under certain circumstances and only with the consent of the adjacent property owner. Second reading of proposed ordinance 07-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 10, Building and Regulations, section 10-30, fences to adopt and re-adopt section 10-30G2C to authorize the building department to issue a permit for the installation of a six-foot fence beyond the side door under certain circumstances and only with the consent of the adjacent property owner. I'm asking for a motion to authorize the first and second reading of proposed ordinance 08-2021 by title only.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schlack. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
First reading of proposed ordinance 08-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 4, Residential Rentals, by repealing and re-adopting section 10-123, expiration of inspection certificate to clarify the date which a certificate of inspection expires. Second reading of proposed ordinance 08-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 10, Building and Building Regulations, Article 4, Residential Rentals, by repealing and re-adopting section 10-123, expiration of inspection certificate to clarify the date which a certificate of inspection expires. I'm asking for a motion to authorize the first and second reading...
Motion.
...by title only of proposed ordinance 09-2021. Good teamwork.
Mr. Lally, second please.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, it's good, it's good. I need something to break it up. First reading, proposed ordinance 09-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 48, Utilities, Article 2, Water, Division 1, generally by repealing section 48-30, remote water meters, and re-adoption of a new section 48-30, water meter replacement program to advance customer compliance in installing more accurate water meters by authoring, authorizing disconnection of service. Second reading of proposed ordinance 09-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 48, Utilities, Article 2, Water, Division 1, generally by repealing section 48-30, remote water meters, and re-adoption, re-adoption of a new section 48-30, water meter replacement program to advance customer compliance in installing more accurate water meters by authorizing disconnection of service. I'm asking for a motion to authorize first and second reading of, by title only, of proposed ordinance number 10-2021.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. First reading of proposed ordinance 10-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 48, Utilities, Article 2, Water, by repealing and re-adoption and re-adopting section 48-32, due date and penalty to provide for a two-month billing cycle, payment due date, minimum fee, and cost for failure to make timely payment. Second reading of proposed ordinance 10-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 48, Utilities, Article 2, Water, by repealing and re-adoption, by repealing and re-adopting section 48-32, due date and penalty to provide for a two-month billing cycle, payment due date, minimum fee, and cost for failure to make a timely payment. And...
I'm going to call for a motion for the third reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance number 06-2021. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, third reading by, by title only of proposed ordinance 06-2021, in ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-34, Designation of Regulated Flood Prone Hazard Areas, and re-adoption of a new section 10-34, Designation of Regulated Flood Prone Hazard Areas, in order to update the studies and maps referred to within the section.
We will now open the public hearing section. Anyone who wishes to come up and speak regarding this ordinance should do so at this time.
Just by way of, what this ordinance is, is the, there's certain areas within the city that are in what's called a floodplain, and the... areas within the city that are in what's called a floodplain, and, uh, the, um, the engineers for the, uh, for the United States, uh, the Corps of Engineers, they designate certain areas, uh, as flood areas, and they, um, periodically create a map of the areas, and then when they update the, uh, maps, we need to, um, likewise, uh, adopt those updated maps. So that's what we're doing today. I don't know if you want to add anything, Matt?
That's it.
All right.
If there's no one coming up, I will close the public hearing section, and we will take a motion to adopt ordinance number zero six twenty twenty-one. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. This will require a roll call vote.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we have a motion by Councilman Lloyd, supported by Proctom Lally, um, to adopt ordinance number six dash two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter ten, Article Two, Section ten dash thirty-four, designated of, designation of regulated fun- flood-prone hazard areas, and re-adoption of new section ten dash thirty-four, designation of regulated flood-prone hazard areas. In order to update the studies and maps referred to within this section, shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
Proctom Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schlag?
Yes.
And Councilman Sykes?
Yes.
The ordinance says pass, and it will be published as a matter prescribed by law.
Very much. And now we come to the council comments section. Um, tonight, uh, Mr. Lloyd starts us out.
Okay, um, so in, uh, as a reward for our students that are getting their council meeting out of the way right off the bat here, I'm going to keep it short. I'm just thinking that it's amusing that our students have displaced the peanut gallery of our department heads at the back. They didn't know where to sit. They're scattered all over the place. Um, so it's good to see you guys in here, um, and I shall yield.
Well, I guess today I would like to, uh, Ellen Park, when we moved into, into it, it was a beautiful place to live, and I have to say that going around the neighborhood, lately, the autumn decorations are just beautiful, and I so, so appreciate seeing it. And that's was just kind of my generalizations as pulling through the neighborhood, and that's all I really have to say. So I yield my time.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Schlag?
Uh, you will be quick. Thank you for everyone who attended. Uh, I know this wasn't the most exciting meeting to come, but sometimes government isn't the most exciting, but so I want to thank you, especially this is aimed towards the students, get involved, and feel free to ask questions, and our department heads, even though they might want to scatter and run away as soon as I say that. Feel free to ask them questions. They're there to answer anything we have and you as citizens to ask. Uh, let's keep in mind that October is breast cancer month, and it's a very serious issue, and with that, uh, I definitely want to also echo what Councilwoman Sykes said about the directions out there, even though it doesn't feel like autumn, uh, keep them coming. I love seeing all the decorations out there, and it doesn't ever, uh, doesn't shock me to see more and more. I guess it does shock me, it is that season. So keep it up. Thank you much, and I yield my time.
Thank you.
Um, didn't hear my name, that's right. Uh, um, first off, uh, it's good to see the students here. Um, and back in the day, I would, used to come here, and you never know, maybe one day, once you're eighteen and older, you might be sitting up here as a representative. Um, I encourage, as always, residents to come up here and speak, um, just to make, uh, if you ha- there's something in the city, please, uh, come up here to your representatives. Um, I also encourage residents to come to our work session meetings before the meeting at five thirty, as well as our study session meetings. You don't get to speak there, but you can listen and what we're explaining and, uh, talking about during the agenda, as well as other things, um, because how some people say like, well, they don't really talk up here, and also it's mostly during those study session meetings that, once we discuss things. Um, we, last week, we're talking about, at our, uh, study session meeting, about sidewalks and stuff. There is an app, uh, Ellen Park Connect, click and fix it. If there's ever a sidewalk that you're walking by and it's too, uh... Yeah, two ra- two fi- two inches off, um, raise, uh, you can always, uh, take a photo of it on this app, and then it'll go to the proper, uh, people, or come to City Hall with the address, and then they'll, they can look into it. Um, I want to thank all the taxpayers, uh, for, uh, being able to spend money to have us have that new DPS building. Uh, it's going to make the city, you, you're gonna, uh, no, it, it's gonna help out, having it one spot instead of having it three different locations. Um, so some positive things. Uh, the other night, or the other day, I was just randomly watching old city council meetings way back in the day at old City Hall and stuff, and just thinking, you know, these meetings used to be three hours long and stuff, so I always, it's, uh, so to the students, it's good that it's only half hour long in meetings, but, um, uh, but it's, it, it just, I want to thank the past councils and how, they don't really, probably don't get much things from future councils and stuff, but I want to thank them, like whoever, whoever comes up here and represents their city and takes their time and effort, I, it's, it's such a great joy. I, it, it just, it's a blessing to represent the city. Um, I also want to thank all the workers every day, especially with these floods. Um, again, I encourage everyone to please make sure you drive safe, especially now with it being, getting dark, darker outside, even in the morning, at some in the morning, going to school, wor- work and all that stuff, please be safe and, uh, again, look both ways before crossing and, or driving. Um, and then also, uh, just keep staying positive, and thank you, God bless, and have a good night. I yield.
Thank you. Mike, uh, did I say anything?
Don't, don't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead. Mayor, uh, thank you. I just want to, whatever the, the Blevins says, I, I'm just tired about that. Because I've been in Ellen Park almost forty seven, forty-five years or whatever, for, that's a long time. And I'll tell you what, I've seen this, this city go down, and I've seen it come back, and it's going very good right now, especially within the Du- DPS Department. It's a beautiful building. That's an accomplishment itself, because it does save equipment, and it saves maintenance, and it saves a lot of work for the, our workers to do their job. And I'll tell you, it's a beautiful building. I can't say too much about it. We had an opening last week, and that was the greatest. I, I, I go there almost every day. I don't take a picture of the dog, but I don't have no dog, but that's a nice little dog there. Anyway, I just want to thank you. Uh, it was a pleasure for me being at the, uh, at the Cabrini Baseball Park or Football Arena there, uh, outside, and meet this young lady, Amanda Chatterston. She is a tremendous young lady. I know she'll go places. Very smart, very polite. She's gonna go places. God bless Ellen Park, and God bless her, and hope she does well as she goes to whatever her commitment is, and I hope she stays with it. And I do want to thank the, uh, the students for coming tonight. I missed that a long time ago, nineteen, two thousand and eight. I don't know, you guys were still not born yet, right? Maybe, they were maybe. And I also want to thank our state representative, uh, Tulio Liborat. Good to have you over here, Tulio. Nice man. Thank you. And other than that, I don't really have much to say anymore, but thank you very much for coming, and God bless. And I yield my time. To the mayor.
I'm gonna let Mike first. Thank you.
All right, I just want to, uh, we're about a month away here. Uh, we do have a special election, November second, for, without reading the language, and I'm not a lawyer, pretty much, I, I believe it's a non-Homestead renewal. So, um, there is language available online. Um, we will be consolidating the precincts, so everybody in the school district will just go to, uh, the community center. Postcards will be sent a little bit closer. So, um, also good seeing you, Mr. Liborati.
It was a pleasure, and, uh, thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to be very brief, because we've covered everything. I covered Amanda at the beginning. Um, we talked about, uh, the Michelin Uniroil tire being lit up. That started, uh, last year when I was approached by a friend of mine who, um, has metastatic, uh, breast cancer, and, um, it's a campaign. Um, they're doing a livestream tomorrow. It's always on October the thirteenth. Um, they are going to be touring the Down River area. All the sites that, uh, light up, uh, reached out last year to South Gate, and they're lighting up three of their buildings. Um, we lit up the front of, uh, City Hall and the police station last year, and it looked really, really good. And, uh, Uniroil did their tire on the thirteenth, and when I contacted them this year to see if they were willing to participate, they could not wait. Uh, they were excited about doing so, and in fact, said, "We want to light that tire up the whole month of October." Uh, so we want it lit pink, uh, for cancer awareness the whole month of October, and on the thirteenth, uh, we'll have it arranged to switch to, to three lights. So they've been a wonderful partner. Um, had to do a little digging to find out who actually owned it and, uh, who we, how we reached them, but it's, it's been very successful. There are some postcards out there, I believe, on the table in the lobby, if you want to pick them up and see how to, uh, get onto their website and do the live streaming. I did watch the livestream last year, and I will tell you that, um, many of the stories, the, the people, the women that are affected, um, just were overwhelming, and I encourage you to, um, take a look, see. I also encourage everyone to get regular checkups, and, uh, don't hesitate to see your doctor if you suspect anything. Early detection is, is vital. Um, and with that, uh, very happy to see the students here. It's nice to have company, so that we don't feel like we're all alone. Um, and we hope to see you again. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Lally. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Six forty-six. Thank you all.